What's that?
Shh.
Right there, around here.
Yeah.
You're acting now.
The other ones.
We're live and recording.
Okay, Amy, can you do a roll call and establish a quorum for us, please, ma'am?
Sure can. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I thought you were too.
Okay, would you pray with me, please? Our Father in Heaven, we just want to graciously thank you today for your love and your mercies that you've given us. Thank you for this beautiful city that we're allowed to live in. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this city. I want to thank you for each and every one of my team members and the staff, and I pray a hedge of protection over them and their families. Continue, Lord, to bless this city with faith, favor, and abundance in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the free United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, anybody?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number five, pass. Number six, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the City Commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Number seven, consideration and discussion to review the City Commission handbook.
Okay, so as you may recall, this is an exercise that is part of the O-MAG recognition program, and you have reviewed your handbooks, I think, all regularly. If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them. I did want to just tell you, I think it's a good exercise because it makes staff and I look at the handbook and go, okay, what's come up? Or it keeps it at the top of our brains throughout the year or two, is, you know, what we can do along the way. But I wanted to say that one of the things that David Weatherford said last week was that the, in Sand Springs, or last meeting, was that in Sand Springs, they had amended their code to say that items of the agenda, items could not be added onto agendas that had solely national political overtones or purposes. And I thought, I was like, didn't we do that? There is already in our policy. We adopted that last year. So that is not new and novel. It is part of our, the policy that we have that, you know, will only business items can be considered on the agenda. Commission staff will endeavor to avoid including items that involve solely national political issues or policy statements that do not have a direct relation on local municipal operations. So we've included that. The, I showed you the big book from David, but I, you know, I did go back through that. There's nothing in there that I feel like we need to bring to you that you don't already have or we don't have adopted somewhere, except that a couple of things that we're already working on. Well, one thing that we're already working on, and that's purchasing policy. And so Rachel's working on that. And then what's not in his book, but we are working on for you, is a sponsorship policy. And that is underway. But there's nothing that, that Bob, Rachel, Amy, or I can think of that needs to be changed that we know of. If there's anything you want to talk about the handbook, but...
I think it's pretty thorough.
Okay.
No action?
No action.
Number eight, consideration and discussion to review the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, municipal liability protection plan, insurance declarations, and explanation of coverage.
That, too, is required by the O-MAG recognition program, and you have that document in your handbook. I mean, it was in your pocket, and it's here on page...
It's about three quarters of the way back, right behind the city manager report.
General. Yeah. It has O-MAG at the top. Basically, you're just required to review, understand that we have basically the same types of interests that we require our own contractors to have. So we have coverage for general liability, for bodily injury, personal injury, property damage, errors, and emissions, automobile coverage, cyber liability. We do have that. That makes me feel better, to the limits of our liability, the city's liability, under the Governmental Tort Claim Act. You can see the amount of coverage that we have and the cost of that coverage on this document. They're attached to that as an explanation of the different types of coverages. So that is more something that Bob and Rachel sometimes refer to, but we, I've been impressed with O-MAG and how they, they work, and just in general. They do smart things like pay David Weatherford to train people, and so that, so that we, we're making better decisions. I will tell you that I had a question about, actually, Rachel had a question I couldn't answer. Was it something about the, oh, the reporting requirement on tort claims? Yeah, whether or not the commission needed to deny, actually deny, formally deny a claim when O-MAG is recommending that we deny the claim. And so I sent an email to their executive director, Matt Love, and in an hour, I had a response from him on that. So they're very responsive, I think, nearly always to issues. They hire good lawyers to represent us when we need them, so I've been, I've been pleased in my experience with O-MAG.
And Matt Love is Margaret Love's son.
Matt Love is Margaret Love's son. I don't know if you guys know Margaret.
She's a prominent, prominent attorney.
She's, she's a prominent city attorney. She's, she's, in fact, the, I don't know if I've told you, it's Oklahoma Municipal Attorneys Association. So city attorneys, when we get together, we have a conference twice a year. They decided that about two, two years ago, they should have awards. You know how they do? You got to do, give this award or that award. And they started giving out four different awards, and one of them is called the Margaret Love Award. They named an award after her. So, and Matt is at least as smart as she is, so it's a good, it's a good thing. Anyway, so any questions for me or Bob or Amy about insurance coverage?
No, it looks pretty thorough and simple, straightforward.
All right. No action.
So this is just going over it?
Yes.
Just so you're aware.
Well, thank you. No action. Number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve amendment to economic development agreement with Beasley Technology Incorporated, a Dunkin' Donuts franchisee.
Mr. Beasley did close on the property on 33. It was specified in the agreement. It took him longer to close than he thought. So the original agreement was through April of 2024, I believe.
The original agreement was requiring him to start operations.
Yeah, by April something of 2024. He's not sure that'll be feasible with getting everything going that's late. So he asked for an extension, and I picked December because I thought it was clean and gave him permission.
Just to start construction?
To have the business open.
Got it.
By December 2024?
Yeah, December 31st, I think is what I put in there. That way, he has plenty of time, because there's also supply chain issues that we're all dealing with that I'm sure will come up.
Where I was going, the construction material, I'm sure.
You'd around here still.
Okay. It's essentially a one-page agreement.
Just extending. Nothing changes other than that.
And I, I would recommend approval. Commissioners, anyone?
Make a motion to approve amendment to economic development agreement with Beasley Technology Incorporated, a Dunkin' Donuts franchisee.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 10, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for Perkins Library Board, one advisory position, term ending November 30th, 2024.
There's a resume in the packet from Sarah Wyatt. I don't see a letter, and I don't remember a letter. I don't know if anybody knows Sarah Wyatt. I do not.
Have a letter.
Oh, you do?
From the May packet.
Yeah, it was in the May packet.
Okay.
It's in the May packet.
Does she live in Perkins?
I believe she does now.
Hi.
Okay. Do you live in Perkins?
I have Stillwater dress, but I'm in Perkins School District.
That'll work. Okay. I was just confused about the Tulsa address on your resume.
Because I didn't update.
Which is very impressive.
Well, that is, that's why we held off on it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We helped, we did a no action and a pass, and then Rachel contacted Dr. Wyatt and explained the situation that we had to wait until she was actually in the district before we could take action on that.
Well, I'm glad somebody remembered. Apparently, I don't.
A lot of money.
You slipped a few times.
Don't forget it.
Isn't that the truth? So Tammy, would this be a good time to invite her to speak if she'd like? Would you like to?
Sure.
Speak to the commission?
Sure.
Come on up and tell us your name and your address, and then let us know a little bit about you.
Okay. My name's Sarah Wyatt. My address is 5715 South Jardale. We are very new to town. My husband and I both graduated from OSU, but we've lived in Tulsa for the last nine years, and I'm very involved in the Tulsa community in many ways, many nonprofits, the higher education area, and also City Council and their chambers, local chambers. But we wanted, you know, a smaller town and a little bit more space for our family. So I have three kids. They're two, four, and six. They're excited to start elementary at Perkins next week. And so we're building a house, and I've, you know, been feverishly keeping tabs on all Perkins things the last year. And when I saw, you know, the library's getting grants, their programming is spot on, sometimes better than, you know, Tulsa libraries that have much bigger budgets and funding, and I've just been really impressed. And so I thought, you know, when the opportunity opens, I'm going to be involved in Perkins Library. And then it did. So I sent you all my resume and my letter, and that's how I got here.
Justin does a great job. Her monthly report is very thorough.
It's pretty amazing.
So you run a consortium where you, in Tulsa, and you're still going to be able to do that from, from home?
Yeah, so I primarily work remote because I work with eight colleges and universities, and to meet, gather them all together, it's Zoom. So it really didn't matter where I lived. Thanks.
Absolutely. Do you have any questions of us?
I don't think so. Not yet. I probably will once we get everything.
So you're going to have a pre-K and a first grader?
Yep. Yep. And then our two-year-old will go to daycare in Stillwater.
Roger in Perkins.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so no action and move to number 11? What? Is it, isn't it? Number 11, consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint Sarah Wyatt. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
To Perkins Library Board, open position, term ending November 30th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah Wyatt to Perkins Library Board, open position, term ending November 30th, 2024.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Wyatt, you should know that this town really, really, really likes people named Sarah. You throw me off every time.
Drives me off as well.
It gets, it gets Amy worse than anybody.
Right.
Confuses Amy worse than anybody. Dr. Wyatt, thank you so much for, like, being new and just jumping in with both feet. We appreciate that.
Thanks. You've all been so responsive to my emails, so thank you.
Stick around. I'll have your kids in class. We'll talk about that later. All right. It'll be fun, I promise. All right. Number 12, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for Board of Adjustment, two open position, terms ending June 30th, 2026.
Don't have anything.
All right, no action, pass. Number 13, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Number 14, I make a motion that we adjourn the City of Perkins Regular Meeting Tuesday, August 8th, 2023.
I'll second.
Boom.
Thank you, everybody. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Oh, well.
I almost did. Sarah?
Yes?
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess we've shared that one.
Six fifteen. Are you kidding me?
I'm learning how to share.
Six fifteen? Okay. Perkins Public Works Authority Agenda Regular Meeting. Amy, will you call the word? We already know we're going to quorum, but let's follow the rules.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, anyone?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
My day.
Next month, put her nameplate.
Facing me.
Get another one so it's facing her.
Yeah.
You guys can see her name, and then she can see mine.
I'll need that.
And I'll give you my caffeine.
Preferably in pink.
Focus. All right. Number three is a pass. Number four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, Perkins Public Works Authority Board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding long-range water sustainability program, water rate analysis by Randy Clark, project manager, Oklahoma Rural Water Association.
They are unable to be here again.
Correct.
I have received the report. I received it late yesterday, and I will email it out to you. We'll go from there. Randy Clark is apparently retiring in two weeks, so I have no idea what that means for...
So, any idea when we'll get this report, like, reported by somebody at the?
Maybe September. Basically, what the report says, what they do is take all of your expenses related to water and sewer, and then what we charge, and they figure out if you're sustainable. But there's different ways to look at that, and you can factor different things in. So it's kind of a, if you put a lot of fluff in, you're going to get a lot of fluff out. So when I read the report, basically, if you just double everybody's rates, we might be sustainable. So I don't know that that's going to be a real pop, popular option. So I also want to spend more time looking at it and trying to extrapolate the data so I can figure out what, because there's some things I looked at, and I know they're wrong. I just, on the expense side, there's no doubt in my mind they're wrong. So because I picked up on some of those so quickly, I want to spend some time. The first time we went over this, they brought a different community's rates to the meeting. So after a few minutes of arguing back and forth, I finally figured out, this is, this is not our information. It was a different community's rates with our expenses. So now I just want to be sure.
So does that report factor in the 7% that went through commission a few months?
Probably not. Probably not.
Okay.
The problem, when you factor in all your debt and depreciation, and you have a huge $7 million note, and you want to be sustainable over and above that, and fund all the depreciation of all the things that we've been spending an incredible amount of money on, on the plant, it's cost prohibitive, it's just, it's never going to work that way. If you factor in everybody's time in City Hall, everybody, the electricity, the vacation, the retirement...
So it's all-inclusive?
100%. So, and it's, and you could also get into the weeds and say, how much time does the city manager spend in reference to water? And that's, and that's what they do. And you could make the argument that all of my time is spent in water or sewer.
It has lately, hasn't it?
Yes. But then there's other times where I'm doing other things. So how do you, that's on the expense side. And then when you compare that to the revenue side, there's also the issue of our meters. You know, we have 1,000 meters that need to be warranty replaced because we're not sure what they're doing, and we've had issues with them.
At least 200 every month, right?
Every month. So there's just, there's a lot that goes into it, and I don't think it's fair to take a real simplistic look without paying very close attention to the numbers. And, you know, they're doing these for hundreds of communities and water districts. So I can see where it would be easier to cross things up and look at lines crooked. But Randy told me he's retiring in two weeks, and there'll be someone else contact us, and I'll get with them, and we'll go from there.
We're halfway through 30-year maturity?
2030 is when it...
2030, so.
I think it's 2030 when it pays off.
Yes, it's 2030. The original era was...
But then when you get to 2030, we're not going to be debt-free. We're going to have to be, I mean, we're doing it now, but it's going to continually, and the more regulations that come down, the more things we have to do, and the more cumbersome it becomes.
Everything costs triple.
Everything costs triple, and then...
It takes forever to get here.
So, you know, it, you hear people say, government should run like a business. Maybe that's true, but the people can't afford for the government to run like a business. Because if you fact, when you start factoring in depreciation, and you do your fixed assets, and you work on your fixed asset management system where you're tracking depreciation, it's going to usually have a positive effect on your financial standing. But it has a negative effect when you look at it from the other perspective, are we charging enough for our services? And the other thing we have to remember is government is not necessarily a money-making deal, or...
Or profit organization.
But if you run it like a business, there's not a business in the world that doesn't revolve around the dollar. They have to make money. So it's...
It has to revolve around people.
So you want to, sustainable can mean different things to different people. Sustainability in businesses, profitability. I don't know, you know, if the city could break even and maintain what we have. But every city in the world, they've got, I mean, you go up the road to Stillwater, they got a water line they call, they want to fix, needs fixed up. They got old water lines and sewer lines in the ground. They got electric wires. Everything's aging, so...
Isn't it, though?
But I will try to get somebody here from the Rural Water Association in September, but I'm wondering if, when I have the conversation with the new person, if, you know, the report will change, or if we can...
And he was being a little facetious when he said they're, you can double, they're recommending double rates. It's really not that much, but...
They're recommending 111% increase in the sewer rate.
But you're going to go overall of that?
In the sewer rate, not in the whole bill. But that's all based on the loan for the plant. And, well, why'd the city get the loan for the plant? Because DEQ and EPA told the city, you can't have your lagoon system the way it is, and you have to do something. So, like, some of these, that's where it gets real dicey, regulations, and it doesn't matter if you're liberal or conservative.
That was before you, wasn't it?
Yeah. It doesn't matter where you're at, but we need to, in my estimation, be somewhere in the middle of the road with some common sense.
See if we can find stuff somewhere.
You should know that we didn't pay any money for this report.
No, this is part of the program, which is a good program, because, you know, we need to, in every community, people are upset about the rates. It doesn't matter if they pay $500 or $50, it's, the rates are too high. But they look at a lot of rates, and that's how they do it.
A lot of our community doesn't know what your staff, James' staff, is going through, trying to keep it.
Oh, he's going through it, and I'm...
Oh, he is.
And I'm putting him through it, too, because I talk to him every day, every day, first thing.
We have conversations, yes.
They're going to filter your salary into that. So that's what we're getting between James and DEQ?
Yeah.
Just like, okay, I got you.
But I'll get them here. I'll get them here. September, October, hopefully September.
Well, that was good information, Bob. Thank you for explaining things.
I'll send it out, and you'll see what I'm talking about. And then I'll send it back to them.
James, you are appreciated. I want to know that. I know you work very hard, and...
Right now, you know, truthfully, I've told Bob, with the condition of plants in, I don't feel like I'm doing justice for you guys with all the problems we're having, because I can't get it to where it needs to be. But I know I'm making strides, you know, I'm seeing small steps, baby steps, we're getting there. But it's just, like I've told Bob, it's just not going to happen overnight till we start getting some of this mechanical stuff.
It's like two-stepping.
Well, the work that you're doing is more than...
Keeping us...
Thank you.
I do appreciate it. That means a lot.
You don't have all the tools to make it successful right now, either.
True. But still, that does, because of the type of person I am, I take it personal.
Welcome to the club.
And that's the kind of person we meet.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, James.
We appreciate you.
I take it home with me, and I try not to, you know, I try to keep the two separated, but it's not always doable. Depends on what the day's been like.
We, the, the jobs that all of us do up here on our, in private sector, we totally understand that statement, and I wish I could tell you to leave it at home, but...
You can't.
I would call the kettle black on that one. So, again, we appreciate you and how hard you work for our city and how much you care. So, item number five would be a no action. Number six, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Number seven, I make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting for Perkins Public Works Authority Tuesday, August 8th, 2023.
One second. Thank you, everybody. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. I got dressed up for that.
Did you hit the right button?
I hope so, babe.
Did you leave it all?
I did not touch it. I could. I try not to touch that thing. I'll mess it up.